...Hall Building, 915 South Togaville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, which call you well, please.
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacominno.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Teresa Coleman, city manager.
Here.
Ashley Coronado, city clerk. Jesus Haro, public works director. Alberti Chave, police chief. George Castillo, fire chief. James Ledbetter, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For tonight's moment of silence, I'd like us to take a moment of silence on behalf of those millions that have suffered and are about to suffer the wrath of Hurricane Doran. So please join me. Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So I wanted to go through a couple announcements. I want to congratulate, announce that one of our staff members, Adrian Porcas, has reached his five-year mark with us. So congratulations, and we're certainly lucky to have Adrian. Samantha Goldich has been moved to the position of early literacy outreach coordinator. And Carlos Moreno has been promoted with the police department, has been promoted to sergeant. Now it's effective in just August. So congratulations to all of them. And we are going to try to keep everybody up to date as promotions and changing of jobs and so forth happens, just so you know continually who your people are to contact. So I'll go through a couple things that I've been doing in the last two weeks. On the 20th, I had an NPR interview regarding the 2020 census. And I discussed with them the effects of short-term rentals on our census count. And I'll explain that a little more here in a minute. On the 20th through the 23rd, I attended the League of Cities and Towns along with Ms. Klein and our newest member, Mr. Pollak. And so we all went individual, wherever we wanted to go to learn things. And I really, it was an absolutely excellent conference. This is my fourth one, and this is the best that I have been to. Some of the things that I went to and learned was the short-term rentals, again, this is a huge problem. It's a huge problem in many ways, but we haven't fully grasped the problem. Right now, Jerome, Arizona, has 42% of their housing in short-term loans. And I brought up the fact that with the census coming up, that provides them 42% of their housing that's unoccupied. It will not be counted in census as being occupied, and that's something they have to live with in 10 years when it comes to funding. So this is a huge problem for us for the same very reason, but certainly more for some of the other locations. So this is not an indictment on short-term rentals, but it is a situation that as a city, we need to look at this, and we need to formulate a plan so that we get people registered in Bisbee, Arizona, instead of where they may have a different residence, such as Tucson, Texas. I attended a session of the PSPRS update. Nothing much to report there. The state is still over $2 billion in the red on PSPRS. Social media pitfalls, which was very interesting, having to do with mayor and council should and shouldn't be doing with social media. And then I was invited to the Erisan Conference, this is Arizona-Sonora Conference. And this was attended by over 85 people, way more than half were Mexico, as far down as Huaymas, Emerald Steel, throughout Sonora. And we primarily discussed trade and social events and upcoming events, but it was a tremendous group. On the 27th, we had a meeting with fire department, building department, and our city manager in reference to international fire codes, permits, and fees. I had been asked by building and the fire department to provide my professional input to that, not as a mayor, but as a consultant with what I do in my day job. And so we had a conference about that, and we'll be bringing a lot of that information to the council so that we can discuss it in a possible action on that. I attended the police and fire advisory committee, and we discussed primarily neighborhood watch issues. The city manager and I had a meeting on the 28th with the county administrator regarding streamlining and modifying our IGA, intergovernmental agreement with Cochise County, having to do with our fleet vehicles, obtaining fleet or vehicle for police, fire, public works, things like this. And so we were solidifying a few things, which obviously there's changes that likewise will come to the council. And on the 29th, I met with some interested parties regarding a dark skies initiative. Although this is classified as, we say we're a dark skies city, in reality, we don't have all of the requirements in place, as does the county. So it was brought to our attention to meet with the county and see if we can strengthen our city code. And just today, I met with Douglas Police Department, Bisbee Police Department, the county attorney, and Chira Kala regarding transportation issues involving the Coach Cheese Addiction Recovery Partnership. That program has become very, the good news is, and the bad news is, it's become very successful. And so we're discussing ways of transporting people that need assistance without using all police labor. So that's what we were discussing. So that's what I've been up to, and obviously afterwards, I'll entertain any questions after the meeting's over or at any other time. So we'll move on to call to the public, and I have Dan Kavanaugh. Did you want to speak?
No. There's a gentleman here who does.
Oh, there's a couple. Andrew Laws. Welcome, Mr. Laws.
Hello. My name is Andrew Laws from Rankman. I live at 139 Clausen Avenue, Bisbee. I was here several meetings ago and asked you guys to consider a request. Ms. Johns very nicely asked for the two parties involved to talk about it, which didn't really happen. Mostly it was just them telling me how it was going to be, which I vociferously said I was not for that. So I'm here with a petition to put it on the council agenda. So sorry to make copies for everybody, my prayer is low in importance. Petition to the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee requesting following items to be placed on the agenda for discussion in purple before the Bisbee 1,000 Sterecom event is held on October 19th, 2019. Number one, to prohibit the use of a balehorn or otherwise amplified announcing during the, I wrote Iceman, I guess they call it the Iron Man portion of the competition, except at the courthouse where all other announcing takes place. And number two, discussion of the impact of the quality of life on the quality of life of the residents of the stairs next to the balehorn headquarters due to the signage promoting those stairs permanently painted on their wall and possible removal of that signage. So they, Cynthia and Linda, decided they were going to put the amplified noise up on their deck. So to me, that's even worse. Now it's going to go in my roof as well, and I'm surrounded by the noise. And I just don't see any reason for amplified. Who are they amplifying it for, the restaurants across the street? I mean, there's only usually a dozen people or so standing around during that event. It's just unnecessary. And it totally drives away my customers. I had people in my shop on the event last year that told me they could not stay because of the noise level of balehorn outside my door. And the other one about the, you know, they have signage at the bottom of the stairs, directing people, these are the Iceman and Iron Man stairs. Well, nobody cared about those stairs. I've lived there since 1986, 36 years. Nobody paid attention to those stairs, nobody looked at them twice, until that sign went up. Now I'm inundated with people standing down there yelling at each other up the stairs, taking photographs of me coming out of my house, sitting at the restaurants across the street, yelling at people going up and down the stairs. It's totally out of hand and unnecessary and ridiculous. It doesn't, you know, promoting your business is great, but she's full. She's always, she's slowed down. She can't get any more customers.
Mr. Laws, time's up. Thank you, sir. Mr. Laws, yes, please give that, that's right. Thank you, sir. Let's take solace.
Yeah, but she's the top. Okay. This is for Bisbee? It's Bisbee.
Well, I don't. You want to, okay. Do you want to call to the public?
No, we submitted a permit.
Right. And we're going to get to it.
Okay. So that's not it.
Okay. Joe Frost. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I gave you all some ordinances that I sat in front of you. I highlighted the ones that pertain to what I'm about to say, and I wish, I hope they can take this into consideration. My name is Joseph Frost. I reside in 26 San Jose Drive. I respectfully request that the council reclarify what is written in the city ordinance pertaining to fowl being permitted in city limit. I called animal control over 10 weeks ago about the nuisance of roosters, ducks, and chickens in my neighbor's area. Animal control responded to the address, although the neighbor refused to answer the door. Finally, they were able to get to her. I was told she was finally contacted and given two weeks to do something about the noise and the awful smell, or she would be cited three weeks, or she would be cited. Three weeks later, she was not cited, and nothing was resolved, and she was given another two weeks to do something about it. Another three weeks went by, and I was told by animal control there was nothing they could do. Feeling frustrated and being a military person, I decided to use the chain of command. I followed the chain of command by calling the chief of police and left a message for him to contact me. As he never called, the next day, animal control did go back there, and she was cited and issued a summons. As for the citation, the city ordinance states the defendant will appear in court within five days and subject to $100 fine and $300 fine for the second complaint, and each day following contributing to a separate offense. It is now two weeks later, nothing has been done. As the defendant has had ample time to deal with the situation, I request the animals be apprehended for relocation. My wife and I have enjoyed, have not enjoyed a full night's sleep in seven months since moving to San Jose. The roosters go off at around 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning, followed by the ducks at 4:00. If you notice, if you read some of the things in there, like what's a herd is three, well, she has about 12 ducks. She has over five roosters. I would like to invite each and every one of you to my house for a barbecue in the backyard. If you can, after the barbecue's done and you begin to eat, if you can stand the smell, please let me know. I was told by animal control that Bisbee is the only town in Arizona that allows fowl in city territory. If nothing else, of any ordinance that I've circled, the nuisance clause is right there in the forefront of somebody doing something.
Thank you, sir.
Now, I don't know if the city council can do anything, but I just don't know where to turn. I did, I've done my chain of command.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And I've gotten no results.
Thank you. And you don't want to speak?
No, sir, but thanks for thinking of me.
Well, somebody's on there, aren't you? All right. We'll move on to the accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $281,856.3. I second.
We have both, we have second questions?
Yeah.
Ms. Giacominno?
On page six, under the water, I guess this would be you, Mr. Harrow. Why is the West Vista, Hobson, Waterville $474, and Lower Vista's like $166? Is it Lower Vista, the one that waters part?
Yes.
So why would the one up higher be $474?
I will have to look into that. I don't know. I've not been notified of any leaks, and usually if there was a leak, they usually get notified very quickly.
Yeah, it just kind of stood out because of the location of where it's at.
Absolutely. We'll look into that.
That's it? All right. Thank you, sir. All votes in favor, paying the accounts payable, signed by by, speaking, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? motion carried unanimously. Consent agenda. Items A through H. A, approval of the mention of a special session of mayor and council held on August 19th, 2019, 7:00 P.M. B, approval of the appointment of Sylvia Annabelle to the charter review committee. C, approval of the appointment of Arthur Wallers to the airport advisory committee, commission. D, approval of the resignation of Judy Flowers from the transit advisory commission. E, approval of the resignation of Alice Hammers from the police and fire advisory committee. F, approval of a park facility right-of-way use permit for the Bisbee Rotary Club Vintage Bisbee Food and Wine Tasting and Entertainment at City Park on Saturday, October 12th, 2019, from 8:00 P.M. to 10:00 P.M. G, approval of the special event liquor license application submitted by the Bisbee Rotary Charities for an event to be held at City Park on Saturday, October 12th, 2019, from 5:00 P.M. to 9:00 P.M. Thomas Nelson applicant. H, approval of the liquor license application for Passion Sellers located at 2 Main Street, number eight, Bisbee, Arizona. Arlene Linda DiMattego applicant. Counsel, does any member of the council wish any of these polled for discussion? I'd like to poll H. All right, H is polled. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A through G. Second?
We have a motion, we have a second to approve items A through G. Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Items A through G are passed unanimously. I'm set, yes. Item H, Mr. Higgins.
I noticed that the wine case base has been open at least since last Thursday, and it just is now coming before the council for approval, and maybe the city attorney could explain to us how that works? That people open up and start selling wine without the approval of the council?
Obviously, if the city were inclined to not approve it tonight, they will have to then repeal it. But I'm sure they, I wasn't asked to look at this license, but they likely receive a temporary permit for opening up, and that happens on occasion where temporary permit is issued, meaning that all-in-life criteria for operating a wine bar are met. I don't know what the particular license is, whether it's a vintner's license or a wine bar. Presuming it's a wine bar, they can go ahead and get the approval of the entity subsequent that once the state has checked out the criteria. If you then voted against it, they can appeal it then back to the state, and the state will then have to do a supermajority to overrule your decision based upon the license that's being issued. But yes, I have seen in the past, and I don't, Sarah, I'll be honest with you, I didn't know this question was coming, I didn't know the specifics of the particular license, but it is common for a restaurant or other entities to open up a few days before the public entity has their meeting. That occurs, and probably a temporary license is issued, would be my guess. But I can't tell you that for gospel, because I just don't know. I just tell you what happens in practice.
It would be nice to know that before we vote it on this.
It does say the date posted says July 29th. Does that make any difference?
That's probably when they received their temporary license.
Okay.
And they have an affidavit of posting.
We have to post it for 21 days at the location to let the public know that it's coming up.
So that doesn't mean that it's been?
That doesn't mean that, I don't have any knowledge if they have an application or a permit or not. That's just our notice of posting that the police department went up and posted the application.
I will say, the gentleman indicated that he was the owner, called me to try to explain something that I didn't realize was a problem to begin with, and had to do with, he said, I wanted you to know that we're legally operating, that the license is in, I thought he said my mother's name, and it's being transferred. And so I just figured if you had any questions, I wanted you to know that. And frankly, if there had been no questions, so it went right on by that. If that makes any difference or any sense.
It could, but in terms of Councilmember Higgins' direct question, was it permissible to open? It is possible they could have opened if they'd done it correctly. And I don't know the answer, that's it. I can figure that out, come back and report to you, and let you know.
As a minimum, I would like to see that, because I'm uncomfortable with this also. So that action would, if it's, would their temporary, assume they have a temporary license, would that temporary license carry them through to our next, or do we know?
I would know. I'm telling you, good license. It would forfeit. If they have a temporary license, or if, as suspected, they might have, in the entirety of my, have opened without appropriate authority approval at the time, it would suspend their operations. It would also make it difficult. An applicant must remain capable, qualified, and reliable. Those are the loose standards for owning or operating a liquor license in Arizona. If this were to happen, this would be something they may have to overcome in terms of their qualifications and their reliability to reopen. So a decision like that could lead to their not receiving a license.
From the state.
From the state. The state is the ultimate authority on issuing the license. Your role as a municipality's advisory, but if you did oppose it, and I'm pretty sure they got a temporary license, because the state is very, monitors this quite closely.
They would have a temporary license from the state.
Correct.
Yeah, but nothing from the city council, so.
Yeah, the city side is a business license. Liquor license is exclusively.
It's from the state, I understand that. But the entertainment district, when we set up the entertainment district, which made it, you know, easy for us to hand out liquor licenses within that district, which this business is within the entertainment district, that's not, it's just that, you know, we haven't, as a body, we haven't proved this, and if this is done, you know, if this is done legally, which you say you suspected it is.
I do.
It would have been nice if somebody from Passion Sellers was here. I don't see anybody.
Here.
From Passion Sellers. So maybe that would have helped if someone had come here and maybe clarified that for us. I don't want to shut these people down, on the one hand, but on the other hand, you know, we're doing a lot of suspecting here.
Of course.
Yeah.
But at the end of the day, by passing an entertainment district, that generally telegraphs a city plan to increase the number of licenses available, so you increase your tourist traffic.
No, I have no problem with that. That's something that this body gets to decide, which this body has not decided yet.
I meant in terms of creating the entertainment district, that was my reference. Your, Mr. Higgins, I do have a great deal of experience with this. I did chair the liquor department.
Well, that's why I asked you, sir, because you are our attorney, and you have a great deal of experience. That's why we.
And I'm relatively confident they would have had a temporary use permit, but I just can't tell you that without looking at it. So my answer would be the 90 percentile, it would be the 100 percentile. And in the process, as your advisory back to the state on the license, if you said this is not an appropriate location?
No, I'm not saying any of that.
So.
I'm not saying anything is inappropriate, I'm just saying that it appears that they're, that they've opened up without approval of this body. That's what I'm saying.
And that.
And you're saying that maybe they have some sort of temporary license which allows them to do that, and we don't know that, sitting here. I don't know that.
Correct. And if prior to the council meeting, you have a specific question like that, let me know. I'll make sure the answers are deliberate and entirely deliberate. But it's highly likely that they have commissioned opening, because it happens with a great deal of frequency, especially in an entertainment district.
Any other questions? Yes. May I ask? I'm concerned about the appearance of us being a rubber stamp for something that hasn't come before the council before. I don't think that's right. I think it should be looked into, and if nothing else, made an issue so that it can't happen again. And your suggestion to look into it after the fact, in my opinion, would be the minimum that we could do to make sure that this didn't happen again. I think both of us, and probably, I can't speak for everybody on the committee, but I feel that everything that you said is correct. There's no reason for us to make an issue out of this to get in the way of commerce in a way that's a successful act. But I think that the people who apply for these licenses need to know that there's a process, and they need to be aware that they're going to be expected to follow the process. And that's what I would ask. I'm suggesting that we don't know that they didn't follow the process. That's true. Well, what I'm saying is, they don't come to us and say, oh, I'm going to put it, I want to put in a wine bar. They do their due diligence, they then bring a liquor license to us for us to pass that. So this is the time that they're bringing it to us. So this is the time that they're bringing it to us for us to pass.
No, no, this is after the fact.
No, it's, well, okay. It's, it's, to us in time, it's after they receive the state's, we are assuming they've received the state's approval.
Correct.
And they received the state's approval on a certain day, so they opened with a temporary license, waiting for our meeting, so that we can give them the okay, so that it then becomes the point of the place.
Did we find out if they have that temporary?
Actually, I do believe they have their state liquor license. I actually walked in there and asked them.
Okay.
How is it that you're open when this is on the agenda for next week? I asked them that last week, and they pulled out their state liquor license and showed it to me. And I said, yeah, that's a license from the state, that's not from the city of Bisbee. And maybe they are operating on a, you know, on their Uncle Joe's liquor license or something, you know, I have no idea. And it seems like no one else does, do you know?
That's the problem.
And there's no one here from Fashion Cellars to clarify this for us. So if we table this, and it's going to be two weeks, and they'll just, what, operate on their temporary license for the next three weeks? We're in the dark, because what I'm saying is, we're in the dark here, we have no idea what's going on.
Ms. Jackman.
I think what might have solved the dilemma, I guess, for better term, is had this been on a prior meeting, so it would have been approved before the little softer way. I think that's the issue, it's like we're being kind of caught off guard. And I think that seems to be a practice with a lot of things, it's not just this, it's like after the fact, oh, by the way, you know, or that needs to be typed up, I think. Because it's like, you know, we're, like you said, we're not sure, you know, and okay, they have their state liquor, but we have a privilege as a city body, you know? You don't want to keep up with the simple fact of doing it much more prior ahead, is, is I think a better, a better means, if that makes sense.
Do we have further discussion, do we have a motion?
I have a question before we, these people, if we do not vote on it to get a new table it, what does that do to the, to the operation itself, to the passions, passion?
Again, my assumption, my assumption is they have a temporary license, I don't know the duration of the license. If their temporary license were to expire based upon a table, if everything operated correctly, they would be closing and no longer selling during the time period they were without license.
Okay, so if we make the assumption that they have a temporary license, and we table this until there's clarification, then their temporary license, as far as we know, since we don't know, should cover their operation until this comes back before the council at that next meeting?
And I have to tell you, I don't know that answer, I can't tell you that answer.
Well, I would think that would cover them until they got their, their license.
If they have a temporary license, it should cover them.
Unless it expires.
Correct.
Temporary licenses aren't there forever, they have a finite date. So you got your question, you didn't get your answer?
The state believes that the city is generally absent, you had some concerns about the individuals, then that would be the normal basis by which a city would react negatively to a liquor license inside an entertainment district. Once the city chose to create an entertainment district, prohibitions like the distance from a church, those things are all lifted. And so the state makes the determination that the city is moving forward and endorsing the concept to have a higher saturation of liquor licenses within that entertainment district. And that does facilitate the process at the state level for issuing it as a license. So the state would be assuming that you've already given tacit approval to that license because it's within your entertainment district. So that would be the normal process that would occur. I just can't tell you the specific licenses.
You're, you're saying that by having an entertainment district, would it, would already given tacit approval for this wine bar?
For liquor licenses within the entertainment district, yes. You do vote on them always, because you're also looking at other things other than just the location, but you've pre-approved the location for liquor licenses within side and entertainment district.
So it, so really, we have no role in this anymore, we have no function as a body?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to convey that, what I was trying to convey was, you principally are looking at whether you think the persons holding the license are capable, qualified, and reliable. Those are the three statutory standards.
That's from the state, not from the entertainment district.
It views the individual, and that would be the standard by which you would have to apply to make a determination. You have to make the decision under liquor license about a site being appropriate and even a location, and then you have to make sure that the persons holding the license are appropriate. Those are the two problems that you look at, both person and place. And generally speaking, if you create an entertainment district, you want more of those to happen. I would just share with you my experience from Cotwood, Arizona, when there was one wine tasting room, they stopped. Now that there are 10 wine tasting rooms, it's a destination. So that's the purpose of creating an entertainment district, is to bring multiple tasting rooms in, so you.
That I understand, sir.
Well, I'm not trying to talk down to you, my point is this, the state would look at that as a tacit approval for location. You just have to make a decision as to the individuals, and you could choose to decide, we have too many. But in this case, to my understanding, there's one other wine tasting room, and the state wouldn't deem that to be saturation. So this body can choose to act in whatever direction it wishes to go, there might be unanticipated consequences if you were to target this license because of a time issue. If you had a concern about the business, I would recommend that you move on to concern about the business. I only make recommendations.
Okay, what do you recommend that we do as a body?
I would recommend that you have a second wine tasting room in the district, if you want to attract that here. I would encourage you, my recommendation would be to encourage to move forward on it. You could re-raise it again if there's an error with respect to the licenses, and you could charge and research that error and all that background even in just a few days, and let you know if there was an error somehow. If that were the case, you could then revisit your decision. But in the meantime, I don't think you should go forward, in my opinion only, I don't think you should go forward with the challenge of this time. I think you can directly to re-investigate it, and if there was an issue, I can bring it back to the proper channels. I'd bring it back to Ms. Coleman, who then put it on the agenda for you guys to consider. But the odds are, if you do it correctly.
I move to approve a liquor license application for fashion sellers located in two means, to number eight, Bisbee, Arizona.
I second.
Ms. Cornet.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacaminos?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Can I do that, can I make a motion and vote against it, is that legal, sir?
He tells you, sure, there's nothing wrong with it.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes. New business. Discussion on possible approval of the Hogg's Glass Company Inc. replaced two bay doors at the fire station located at 182 State Highway 90.
Item three, please.
Well, you know what? These poor people have been there so many times, they probably think I did that appropriately. Mr. Harrell, the mayor. You'll go on to item number three. Discussion on possible approval of a donation of windscreen for the use on the pickleball court in Higgins Park during the months of March through May. Mr. Harrell.
Mr. Mayor, members of the, good evening, just a brief reminder of this agenda item, this is for pickleball windscreens. It's a deletion that was arranged by BBI. They're intended to be placed on pickleball courts in Higgins Park. They will extend the full height of the fencing, six feet tall. The life expectancy of these are up to 20 years. The parks committee has recommended a stipulation, as mentioned in the agenda item, and BBI has expressed concern with the installation dates in, has also expressed that they may rescind the donation.
Thank you, sir. We have a, Ms. Moore, Linda Moore.
Hi, my name is Linda Moore, and I am here on behalf of pickleball players in Bisbee. And just to, I know that the park recreation department has suggested that we only put them up during three months out of the year, which are possibly the windiest. But I'm here to say that 12 months out of the year, there is wind at some, at some point in, in Bisbee, so that we should have them up 12 months out of the year. A couple reasons are, the reason, I mean, the, I know that the reason the park recreation doesn't like them is that they think that they are unattractive. But it's a very common thing for tennis, pickleball, to have wind screens in your park. Higgins Park also is a park that is sports oriented. They have pickleball, they have swimming, and they have basketball. So it's not something that is, they are totally, not that it isn't beautiful, I love the park, but it is a sports related park. And I would say that even in the pool area, there are wind screens of some kind, maybe privacy, I'm not sure, but there are wind screens there also. So it wouldn't be a totally unusual thing for the pickleball courts to have, the wind screens up 12 months out of the year. I think that's all I got. Anyway, we would love to have, I did mention the last time I was here, I think I forgot, but the last time I was here, that we would even compromise possibly where we put them up and see if they really offend people or whatever in the park. And then if so, then, the thing is that with the head, the donation that we have, one of those stipulations is because they're giving them to us as a donation, that they want to have some kind of, you know, like they're, they want to get something out of it also. So that's why they want to put them up 12 months out of the year. So if they don't get to 12 months out of the year, they may rescind them because they may want to give them to some other place that will put them up. And it's approximately a thousand dollar donation.
And that is their logo?
It is their logo on it. The head corporation is who has donated those, and there's a head logo on it, there's several head logos actually.
There's one, at least one on each side, right?
I, I can't, I mean, it may be on each panel, I'm not sure. But, but yeah, they donated them, you know, they, with the idea that they would be put up 12 months out of the year.
Yes, please.
Um, the end of this says it's blocking art, what art is it blocking?
Blocking art?
It was their donation, and, um, I don't know. It was just a concern about the windy months.
I don't think there's any art in that.
Oh, here it is. Expressed that these were unattractive because they would block the vision of the arts.
I don't know what art we're talking about.
That's what I was confused on, it's in Linda Moore's paragraph, it's, it's in that, and I was just curious what, she understood that the Parks and Recreation Committee expressed that these were unattractive because they would block the vision of the arts. I mean, there's horse screens, what art would they be referring to? There's no art.
The Parks, the Parks Committee expressed that they would block the vision of the plants and flowers, not art.
Oh, okay. Well, there's really no place in art.
Yeah.
Right, right. Okay. Could I just, just grass?
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have a question, Ms. Moore?
No, I have a statement.
Okay, well then, let's finish with Ms. Moore.
Okay, that just is a confusion.
Thank you.
Am I done? No more questions? Okay.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I want to thank you for being so patient, because I asked to be tabled to be on. And the reason is, I want, wanted people to understand why we went to just the windy months. And it's not because that they're ugly, it's not because of the wind screens, it's because there's a logo on it. And the concept of these parks in rec committee has been no advertising in the parks. So that's the main reason that we compromised and do it, because I know it gets windy March through May. And there are other times it does get windy, but it's usually associated with a storm coming in or something of that sort. So this was a compromise to do it this way, because we have had that concept and been trying to keep the, the parks free of any type of logos or advertising. And it's been that way since I've been the liaison, which has not been that long, it's been about a year or so. I don't know what's happened prior to that. So that was the main reason for going forward for three months. And I, and I, I support them with that. I, I think we opened the door with anyone just advertising, and I just, I don't like that in our parks. We have just beautiful parks, and they're getting better, so that's all.
My only reply to that is that it's okay to advertise for three months but not 12.
That's the compromise, that's what I'm saying.
That's, I guess I made my point.
And we, well, we, you know, we, because we know that they were gracious enough to donate these, or the company was, but we didn't want them up the entire time, so it was a compromise the windiest times. Because that does help the pickleball players too.
Thank you, ma'am, Ms. Jackman.
To kind of be devil's advocate, I guess, anytime you're working with any kind of athletic or sports, when you're asking for something, i.e. scoreboards, sheet screens or such, the way to get it for free is generally the branding that goes with it. True. And, and what's the difference between that and some of the signs, I'm just taking devil's advocate, some of the other signs that we have throughout our town? I mean, it's, you're going to get a thousand dollar donation year round, it'll protect it, just because the word heads on it, I don't, I just, I don't understand that. Maybe because being in, being involved in sports, we look for that and embrace the fact that you're getting something for free, for just a simple name.
Well, there's, I'm not arguing.
Yeah, no, I'm just confused.
But we have gone to head and asked them to put these up, we haven't solicited yet.
No, I know, yours.
You know, so it's, it's, someone has solicited and wants us to then accept their, that's solicitation, but we haven't gone to solicit.
Right, no, I'm not saying have to do something for free, just to put a simple name.
Well, not everything for free is what you really want.
Well, we're still, I'm still a little confused with, we, this is down here for three months, and this is what parks said that they would live with. So either we have three choices tonight, we, for action on this, and then is we accept what parks wants, or what they compromised on. We change the motion and go for 12 months at the request of BBI, or we deny it, those are the three, the three choices. Yes, ma'am.
I am concerned that, and if we start with putting any kind of advertising in our parks, this is going to open the door for other people to advertise even for short times like this. I mean, look at what we went through with the big chair. And, does everybody remember that? And we went, someone just put, and I'll just give a brief recap, because not all of us were here for that. Someone put a big chair with a sign on it in one of our parks, and we had to eventually send a couple of works down there to remove it because they wouldn't move it. And I'm afraid that if we put any kind of advertising in our parks, even for a short time, even though it's beneficial to people playing sports in the park, we're going to get people asking to put signs, even signs shaped like giant chairs in our parks, you know, and asking for special treatment like this. and asking for special treatment like this. And do we really, this, I feel like we're opening the door to put advertising in our parks right now. And do we need to really be thoughtful about doing that? Do we want to open the door to put advertising in our parks? Because that's what we're doing right now, you guys. And we do need to talk about that. And that's the angle I'm considering right now. Even though I've played pickleball in Higgins Park when it was windy and it's rough. And I have a lot of empathy for that. So we do need to think about that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying about advertising. And you brought the big chair. Well, they just put it out there in the city property without permission. They are asking, these people are going through the property channel. And again, it's not just windy and we know that, you know, pickleball is that removal, ruckleball type. And, I don't know, they said they would be willing to, you know, pull them down certain times if there was an issue with it. I don't know, I just, I think screens too, you know, pickleball is whether we like it or not. There's a lot of people that are interested and if we want our parks used, you know. I don't know, I support screens.
But we also have the option of, excuse me. We also have the options of buying screens, wind screens too. So, you know, with no logo on it. But when it's tight, this is a donation. I understand it's a donation.
Well, you know, you're rolling the dice here, but you have an opportunity that you can still pass this and not get the wind screens. I mean, remember they indicated that, I mean, the company wants 12 months. And they may pull that off at three, but that's, I mean, I'm just trying to throw out all the options here. So do we have, do we have the motion?
I move to accept the donation of wind screens for use on pickleball court in Higgins Park. Year-round.
I second.
That motion is year-round. Okay, Ms. Cornyn?
Councilmember Pollak?
Nay.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Nay.
Councilmember Johns?
Nay.
Councilmember Hanson?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Nay. Motion defeated by two. Moving on to...
Can I make the original motion? For the three months?
Yes.
And I would like to make a motion to approve the donation of the wind screens for the use in the pickleball court in Higgins Park during the months of March through May.
I'll second that.
Ms. Cornyn?
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Nay.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes six to one.
Item number four. Discussion of possible approval to have Hodges Glass Company replace the two big doors at the fire station located at 192 State Highway 92. Mr. Chief, please go.
Community mayor and council of the city of Scotty, please. What you've got in front of you is possible approval to have Hodges Glass Company locate here in Bisbee and replace two big doors at our fire station located at 192 State Highway 92. One of the reasons for this replacement is since I became chief, it's one of the things on my bucket list. Our station has six big doors. Two of them in the back, one of them's been down for five years. The other one's been out of operation for almost four years. It hinders our operations because when we have apparatus in one bay, the other one's right behind it and they should be facing the other way for easy access. Lately, we've been having some trouble with the other doors and the fear is if that, any of the main doors fail, now we have apparatus stuck in the station, I don't really respond to call. The two doors that are busted, they do not even open. The other ones, if they fail, it does have a chain on those still order. And again, that hinders response times and also security issues at the station. If we have to leave these doors open, I mean, recent burglaries, what around, we don't, we like to keep our stations secure. So I'm asking you guys to go into group to get two doors replaced with these replacements. It's for two log doors, new motors, electric master commercial door. High-rated cycles, we got the safeties on the bottom, so when the doors, for some reason, if the door fails and it's coming downwards, we have on some of ours, some of them aren't working. You know, it's a safety switch, if it hits the apparatus, it'll pop back up or someone's standing on the door. Eventually, I had them all looked at, all the doors are going to have to be replaced at that station. You know, they're over 20 years old, the signal light on, up and down all the time. But for now, these are the two doors that ain't working. I'd really love to get them replaced and we can back to them all for issues.
Any questions?
I have a question. First of all, I'm very glad to see this happening. I noticed in the balance line, there's a minus $5,500. I assume that there is another way to cut it back.
I believe it pulls some more money out for another item. I did raise in the budget, I raised for station improvements. Unfortunately, I didn't realize, you know, we got the estimate and we didn't think it was going to be that much.
Yeah, it's costly.
It is very costly, but, you know, it's just, we just think it's time to get it done. Maybe in the next years, we'll fight this budget to get one done at a time. But when we were talking to Hodges, he said it'd be best just to get them all done so we have all the equipment there.
If, the budget is always a concern. In this case, it's pretty big concern to have apparatus locked in the station.
Absolutely. Well, I figured that there was, it was coming from someplace. The jury figured that out.
Any other questions, statements? Do we have a motion?
I move to have Hodges Glass Company replace two big doors at the fire station located at 192 State Highway 92.
My second. Somebody else, I think.
This is a contract with Hodges. Ms. Cornyn?
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passing. Thank you, Chief. Item number five. Discussion of possible direction on request for proposal to City Hall Building. Ms. Coleman, before I turn it over to you, we have one person has to speak on the subject. Would that be all right if we had that taken care of first?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, Mr. Hopland?
Albert Harper, architect, 22 Manuelito Trail in Warren. I've lived in Bisbee since 1990. I've had very fortunate opportunities to work with a lot of great clients and buildings over these last years. I've worked with Bisbee School District, about $5 million of renovation and new construction early on. I've worked for other school districts, I've worked for the city of Bisbee, I've worked for the city of Douglas, I've worked for Cochise County, I have a project right now in Cochise County. I've done a lot of private work, Ace Hardware Store over on Amoco Highway. I've done some volunteer work here in the community. I've also done a lot of design-build work, primarily or almost exclusively with federal government work on Fort Huachuca and the Davis-Hawton Airport Base. When I saw the item in this agenda packet where it was discussed, designed-build, I wanted to give you my personal feeling about why I think hiring an architect is the best route to go. And I'll just read this for you as we go down. "A community city hall is an important focal point of civic pride. The architect is the one who brings imagination to the building process to create a structure that goes beyond just utilitarian function. Public involvement in the design process keeps it transparent and encourages new ideas. The architect can facilitate this exchange. An architect should be employed at the very beginning of the building process. He or she has the expertise and experience to evaluate the client's requirements and budget to develop a building program and design contents that bring the program and the budget into sync. In these busy times in the construction industry, costs are high. Compromise and alternatives may be required to make the project become reality. The architect can work with the client early on to develop cost-effective solutions. City staff input is vital to define the facility's current space and technology demands. On the other hand, the life of the building will see many staff changes. The architect can design for present and future needs by incorporating flexible workspace. Some energy-efficient materials and equipment may have a higher initial cost but provide for economies in the future. The architect and engineers are able to evaluate options such as solar systems to make and make recommendations for their implementation. The architect assists the client with the bidding process to ensure that the best possible value for the client is obtained. During the construction, the architect works with the contractor to ensure that the progress, quality of work, and compliance with the construction contract documents are being maintained."
Mr. Harper?
Yes, sir.
We ran over time.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir. But we have it.
Okay.
And...
One last paragraph?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir. And we'll make sure that it's attached to our minutes, sir. Thank you. Ms. Coleman?
Mayor and council, so this agenda item has done exactly what I had hoped it would do and has certainly spurred discussion on how to proceed with the request for proposal for a new city hall building. I did ask your city attorney to provide some information about the design-build process. You've received feedback from folks in your community, including the gentleman tonight, on their thoughts about how to proceed and this is opening a discussion.
Exactly. I would like to, this is a, this has been on the back burner for a while because of staff changes and so forth. We need to move it to the front. But also, I don't want to move too quickly on committing a couple million dollars of the city's money. So what I would like to do is call for a work session on just the options, the viable options that we have, such as design-build, design bid-build, and so forth, and lay these out with the pluses and the minuses for these so that the council as a whole can make an informed decision and move forward with the city's business. So I would like to do that. I would like, if possible, that we do that in the next couple of weeks. I'll get together with Ms. Cornyn in the morning and come up with some available dates and get them out to the council. And we'll have a 5:30 study session and, of course, open to the public and open to any speakers that wish to be there. And with a study session, just FYI, in signing up for that, we can do some questions and answers also, which, that doesn't count against your three minutes. Okay, does anybody have a problem, an issue with that? We're not here. All right. Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
Thank you.
Discussion regarding, this is item number six. Discussion regarding consolidating fee schedule. Ms. Coleman?
Yes, thank you. So currently, the fees charged by the city are spread throughout your ordinance. This would remove those references from the code itself and combine them into a fee schedule that can be easily adjusted based on the actual cost of providing the service. We've also made some adjustments based on what we see as the staff time involved with some of the services that we provide and you will see those adjustments in this draft as well. So we, we as staff are looking for your feedback. Feel free to get ahold of us between now and the Thursday before your next meeting and we'll be, you know, happy to adjust this draft. There isn't any time constraint on doing this because you have, you have fees clearly in your code. But we would like to assist you in updating both your code and your fee schedule as well.
How hard would it be to put what the existing fee is right now?
Not at all, and I think Carrie does actually have a version that has the existing fee, so we can provide that to you for your next meeting.
I have one question.
Sure.
We had a study last year on May 1st, was presented to the council by some graduate students from U of A about our fines and fees. I just wondered if you referenced that at all when you were doing this?
Carrie started this project, so I can verify with her that she had referenced that when starting this project.
Okay, because I went back and looked at that when I was doing this and kind of did some comparisons. And I just think that would be a really interesting thing while you guys are working on this.
Okay. Do you want to see that comparison in a column as well when you...
Maybe, if you guys are doing that, yeah.
Sure, 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 okay.
Ms. Jackman?
We were just looking at this and it says, "New fee needs ordinance." How would that be handled?
Well, we will, at the same time, adopt the fee schedule, which is another reason why it's not going to happen in two weeks. Is that we need to then reference each of those fees in your current schedule to rescind that portion of your ordinance and then, at the same time, adopt an ordinance that would cover that fee.
It's a pretty lengthy, complicated process, actually.
Right, we're just, we don't start. But your, you know, your feedback early on is really important, so, you know, when we have a finished project, it looks like what you were anticipating.
And I appreciate it, it's something I asked for, you know, two and a half years ago to start working on.
Okay.
It's been real slow.
Okay.
I really appreciate the fact that it's actually coming to us.
So we'll bring it back with three columns, we'll reference the study, we'll reference the current fee and then we'll...
Right, and we'll actually be having some fees in there, having to prevent also, which we discussed with the fire department in our meetings.
Yep.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval of Resolution R 19-12 in support of efforts to receive national park designation for the Chiricahua National Monument. Ms. Coleman?
This idea was introduced to us at the county level. The idea being that many folks took national park visits on their to-do list and that we would raise the attractiveness of visits to Chiricahua National Monument by asking that it be re-classified, thereby drawing... thereby drawing more folks to our county to see everything that we have to offer in addition to that monument.
And I, I've been contacted by Senator McSally's office, as well as Representative Kirkpatrick's office, as both of them are sponsoring this in their respective locations of Senate and House. And asking for our support of this also. So, I, with that, I would make a motion.
Could I say something before you make a motion? Or maybe after I make a motion?
Go ahead, make your motion. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R 19-12 in support of receiving, in support of efforts to receive national park designation for the Chiricahua National Monument.
I second.
Thank you. Now, Chief.
Yeah, national parks and national monuments, two different things set up for usually two different reasons. Occasionally, there's overlap that's between the two of them. In this case, the Chiricahua Monument was set up to preserve that area and the rock formations, the Echo Canyon Trail, which takes you through those rock formations. And the, that area is also a wilderness area. And the people that work up there, they use hand tools. They don't use chainsaws, they use crosscut saws to cut, to cut material in an effort to preserve that, that, that area. And it's a beautiful place. And if making it a national park would, would raise the profile, no doubt about it. But by raising the profile, that's counter to what it was set up to do. The monument, monument was set up to protect those rocks. If we change it to a national park, we're gonna increase traffic there probably. That may be good for our little tiny economy here. But, you know, in a hundred years, there, those, those rocks may not look like the same with people tramping through them. So to me, it seems like we're not protecting that monument at all by changing the designation to a park. They're probably trying to promote it, raise fees, makes it a little more difficult for locals to get in there financially. There's campers that go there often. Right now, they do charge a fee, but most of the time, there's nobody getting moved. Most of the time, they've discovered that when they set somebody out there to collect fees, they don't collect enough fees to pay his salary. So it's cheaper just to open the door and let people come and go. And so I see, I see this as counter to preserving those rocks by making it a national park. I know that sounds, you know, you know, a little strange, but I would like to see the designation remain just as it is, a national monument.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Julie, Ms. Cornyn?
Councilmember Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Nay.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes six to them. City Andres reports on item number eight.
All right. Well, there's been a lot happening, especially as far as new staff are concerned. And we have four new hires in our public doors department in July. Eddie Alvarez, Robin Roberts, oh boy, Josay Saavedra, and Abraham Santiago. Hopefully, I didn't butcher that, I butchered too bad.
Jose.
Jose. Oh, it's, oh, boy. It's spelled wrong, maybe on my list. Okay. Police, we have Brett Bretcher, Daniel Brennan, and Hugo Valenzuela Jr. In August, the library hired Damaris Bernhard. And joining us in September of 2019, in the finance department, we have David Roth Gonzalez and Kim Sundick.
Thank you.
Lots happening.
Yes. And, and your Minnesota accidental leaves then?
Yeah, Jose will forgive me. I'll go, I'll go, I'll go find him tomorrow and ask forgiveness. Let's see. Concerns, so I also would appreciate it if concerns were directed through the chain of command. And I know many of the department heads would too. So that would be really helpful for me, especially being new to the position, if, if some concerns come to me initially. And then I'll have an opportunity to discuss them in the tournament. I really appreciate that. I have been, I became aware very quickly that there was some pay, there were pay, a big, there was a big pay equity issue within the city management for the city of Bisbee. You had budgeted $120,000 for the city manager position. That left me an $8,000 cushion, which I had used to start to correct the disparity in the library manager position. So I did use that $8,000 to try to balance out the compensation for your library manager. And in that process, I'm also working on a pay scale with grades and steps to make sure that we don't have any other obvious pay equity issues within the city right now. I will review that with the employee, help me, council, at their meeting tomorrow. And though I'm, you know, not promising anything to anybody, at least hopefully I can bring that to the council and we can take a look at, at what it would mean if we did put your employees in grades with staff increases. So hopefully, I'll have that written for you in the near future. And I think that might be all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Mr. Higgins?
I will do give your...
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Those in favor, signify by stating a aye.
Aye.
Motion's aye. Please stand the jury.